Please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd like to welcome everyone to our second meeting here in August, and we have started our second full week of school, all going well so far. So just a few opening remarks. This is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation for agenda and non-agenda items. Item number two tonight. Our mission is to inspire innovation, empower potential, enriching our world, our vision. Goshen Community Schools, Elkhart County School District of Choice. Item 1.4 is approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
No additions. Mr. President.
All right. Agenda is approved as presented. And Board members, item 1.5, approval of our minutes from the August 11th, 2025 regular meeting and our August 18th, 2025 executive session. Hope we have enough time to review those. Do we have any revisions to those minutes? Seeing none, they are approved as presented. All right, we will now go on to public comments, and we'd ask that you please sign in at the back, and we will invite Ms. Barb Hassan out, please.
Actually, my name is Barb Hassan.
I apologize.
No, it looks Middle Eastern, but it's Irish. As Barb said, my name is Barb Hassan, and I am the proud grandmother of a recent graduate class of 2025, and I'm here to offer my deepest thanks to past and current school board members for championing a diverse school curriculum based upon rigorous and proven standards of excellence. My only daughter and family moved from California in 2011, when my granddaughter was four. Spanish was her first spoken language. Once here, she attended Parkside, the middle school, and Goshen High School. She learned with students from many cultures and religious beliefs. And one of my favorite pictures of her when she was about six, she's hugging a girl from Yemeni and a young boy from Kenya, and they each just have huge smiles on their faces. The varied classes was astounding. She took Mandarin, she took dance, she took Advanced Placement Math, Advanced Placement Science, Advanced Placement English and Art. She loved economics and now proudly budgets. She was involved in musicals, which were very cherished memories for her. Throughout her school career, excellent teachers, counselors, and principals guided her journey. With their guidance and her own discipline and determination, she graduated in the top 10 of her class, and she received numerous scholarships. Today, she is starting her second week of college classes. Thanks to each of you and your thoughtful, evidence-based decisions, my granddaughter is well-prepared for her continuing academic journey. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Nice. All right, that will conclude tonight's public comment. We will now move on to item three, which are superintendent's reports, Mr. Vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start out, and I would like to pass out, I think I have a couple for the audience too, but this is draft form. This is our strategic plan that we're going on this year. It is not much different than last year, not to be boring, but to be more of a hedgehog that we are not doing a lot of new things, we're just doing the things we have with more excellence, I would say. So let me review a couple of those as we go through our superintendent's report. I'll begin each section of the superintendent's report by referring to the objectives that we're outlining here. So prior to turning some things over here on our financial commitment, which is, we are committed to a well-funded, effective, and efficient financial system that supports best-in-class learning opportunities for our students and maintains appropriate balances in all funds. We have three major objectives right now that the board has put into play for us in the last year, and that is, Goshen Community Schools will retire long-term debt by 2040. 1.2 objective is, Goshen manages our budget so that our cash balances are sufficient, requiring no short-term cash flow borrowing. We will budget to maintain a minimum three months' cash balance in the education fund and a minimum 50% cash balance in our operations, operating referendum, and debt service funds. And then our third objective under our financial commitment is, Goshen Schools will pursue funding to support capital reinvestment needs to average 2% of the total valuation of all properties over the three-year average rolling period. And Dr. Evans kind of leads these initiatives and appreciates where we're at, but I would say last year we were on track in all of those, and we intend to stay on track, at least at this point. If we feel like there's a change, we'll come to you and let you know. So continuing with that, we have a few things Dr. Evans would like to share with you guys in regards to our budget schedule, so, and maybe a couple of the financial updates as well, so if you have any. I thought we had a second one.
Well, it is the budget season, so I want to state the budget right now. We had our budget workshop last week, and we finally presented the budget. Then next meeting, the last one, we should authorize the budget. Following that permission, assuming that is granted, I'll post them on the gateway, Form 3, and the bus replacement plan, and the CBF plan. All one week on September 22nd, we'll have a public hearing for the budget, and for the CBF plan, bus replacement plan, and then the term date is to adopt the budget on the budget list. Now, at that time, I'm going to put this ahead of all the statutory requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. So any questions for any of us regards financial commitment? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to continue on. Our student achievement commitment reads as follows, "We are committed to having a top-performing educational system that prepares our graduates for college careers and life." Kind of leading this whole area up is Dr. Metcalf, but we also have Javier Jimenez and Lori Schreiner that are working, leading some of these initiatives at the district level. So let me, if you will, go through these. There's two of them that we're not sure how to word them yet, so they're labeled 2.5, 2.5, but bear with me, you'll see where we're going with this. But 2.1, "We will improve by 1% the students achieving 94% attendance rate or higher on track for attendance district-wide annually until we reach 90% of our, or higher of our students on track." So we made pretty good gains last year, so we're on track there right now, hope to be on tracking that this year as well. 2.2 objective, "We will increase the percentage of students on track for our office behavioral referrals at the district until we reach 90% or fewer on target." And we say fewer on that because we want two or fewer office referrals to be considered on track. If you're three or more, then we consider you off-track for the year. So 2.3, "We will increase the percentage of students in grades 3 through 8 on track on grade-level course expectations on both the English Language Arts and Math performance on the iLearn assessment annually until we reach the top 25% of districts in the state." So of course, we'll try to go higher after that, but we're going to take at least, we want to improve annually. So oftentimes, we talk about 1% better, so that's what that's all about. 2.4, "We will increase by 1% the students passing the iRead 3 assessment annually over the previous year until we reach 90% of all third graders achieving as expected." So we're at 78% right now, we're going to get better. Now, these last two, we don't know how to combine those, work those together, but Dr. Metcalf's working with the high school. We know we want to do something on our SAT scores, and we also want to look at honors diploma with seals and that sort of thing as they graduate. So I'll just read them both, and then you get the gist from this garbled English language that I used to explain this. So we will increase the percentage of students in high school reaching expected on track on both course expectations, on both English Language Arts and Math performance on the SAT annually until we are in the top 25% of the districts. So we kind of like that. There's a, Dr. Metcalf, what was the number on SAT, nine?
I think it was 9.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're thinking about a target like that. I know some of our high school folks, but we'll come up with a hard target, tell you where we were this year, and tell you how we get 1% better for next year. The other one was, "We will increase the number of students achieving college credit certificates, CTs from Ivy Tech, or completing a pathway annually by at least 1% or more of the graduates over the previous cohort of graduates until we reach 80% of all graduates." A lot of language there, we ought to clean it up, so I apologize, but the idea, we want to get a baseline this year, and then from last year, get 1% better for this year, which will include a lot of work and things that we're doing at the district level. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Metcalf for enrollment update, and then Javier's going to give us some data on iLearn and iRead, so.
So currently, we are sitting at 5,969 active students in grades 8 through 13, which grade 13 is our netball program, which has about 60 minutes. That is down about 35 kids from spring count last year. However, if you remember, Kevin studied City Paper about three years ago, three, four years ago. We are almost right about exactly where they said we'd be. They anticipated one more year, plus, I think our lowest getting to 58, like 58, 75 or something like that. And the 2026, 27, it's the year before the birth rates, and things start kicking out, and we start to, they saw us as a gradual increase at that point. So that is where we are currently, our goal. We'll continue on it for that until October 1st, we start counting.
Any questions for Dr. Metcalf? Okay, Javier, let you, you got a PowerPoint.
Yep, so not a whole lot new as far as data, our year's close. The only thing that we were not sure was our iRead results, and we ended up at 78.4% in the 24, 25, which you look at the screen, it's right in the middle there. And so our goal for next year, you know, in the trend of 1%, is to get, I'm going to say 80%, literally more than 1%, but that will be the goal. So what this shows here is a 1% increase, what it would mean for twenty different assessments. So second grade is the first time that our kids get to take iRead. So after 2025, we have 53% of our second graders already passed iRead 3, so they don't have to worry about it this year, third graders. Our goal for that would be at least 54% of second graders. So for third grade, again, we're getting close to that 80% mark. Another 7%, 7.7% will be amazing, but you know, we want to get through. These are iLearn targets, so by grade level, if every grade level gets 1% better, this is what it would result, and then for our district, we can get us over, almost 24% of the district. Something to notice here, interesting, is that as third graders, you see our scores from third grade and eighth grade improving, which is what we like to see as kids are in school longer with us. So the goal here is to get 1% better, and continue to improve at every grade level so that the district shows growth. This screen is what you see as our main goal for iLearn and iRead, because this is both ELA and Math, so this will be the percentage of kids passing both ELA and Math for a grade level with a 1% increase as the target. So that is what we have.
Thanks. Any questions for Javier?
I have a, both the math and the reading. There's a distinct dip at 4, 5, 6, before the trend back up. Any other questions? Well, I would say that that is something that, speaking for elementary, what's something that we're working on is that, right? So we're taking two from six buildings, going into one, and so as we get better in the 4 buildings, we hope to see that a difference in that. Reading is vital, and so our goal of making sure that every kid, or grade closely, fifth grade, that's a sufficient measure, is really what keeps us up at night. That is our mission. If our kids can read, they're going to, if they're going to excel. And we get to that, it's just, you know, that's getting more progress if there are gaps in the in-learn, especially reading, to get a better.
We put systems in place last year, the first year they did it, and there was growth in groups of kids, so we were happy that it's not growing as, like, you're right, there was a dip there, and we've been, we have plans this year, I'm real excited to see what happens, but it's just a further enhancing where we were last year. So the teams are going to work together, they're going to, you know, the process is pretty simple, know what we expect kids to know and be able to do on that test, and then let's make sure we backwards map that. We work with the teams, and the teams focus on that, we give them the tools, and they work together in their creativity and effort and working with the kids, and we really believe our kids can do the work and can continue to get better. Most of these things, I think, you know, we had, like, passing both was 2.3%, and that doesn't seem like a lot, but we went from the 44th percentile in the state to the 55th, or it might reverse, the 55th to the 44th, or 45th to the...
I'm happy.
Yeah, anyway, it's like a 10% improvement percentile point. So there's 390 school districts, we figure out, you know, how many districts did we pass to get there? And just quick math, it's, you know, 30, 40 somewhere in there we passed districts. That means some went up faster than us, and a lot more we passed. So we just want to keep being steady now. We don't want to, you know, the goal isn't to win the whole thing in one year, we'd like to, but you know, but then the next year, we got to make sure we gain 1%, get 1% better too. So whatever gains we make, we want to hold, we want to keep getting better and better and better. And I believe our teachers are just going to get better and better and better, figuring out how to work with our kids, and our kids, year after year, with the group of teachers that have done this kind of process, we should see a kind of growth, and it should be sustainable, and not just a blip on the screen for one year or something, we can sustain.
So one thing I would say, Mr. President, to your kind of question, if you look up there, it kind of seems like the trend is every time we transition, there's a great drop in it. So that's something, how do we make those transitions from fourth to fifth, sixth to seventh, as they transition buildings and structure much more seamless, so that the interruption to learning is not as large necessarily, but you have to develop culture really fast, you have to, so they kind of come in, come in, get to that.
Any other questions?
We passed a couple of months ago the training, I forget what you called, what the name was.
Structure of the intellect.
Is that started now, or does it start later?
Well, it's all started, they've been trained, they have their materials, I don't know where they are.
Yeah, these are the elementary schools are identifying students, and they're encouraged to start as soon as possible. It's, you know, we're wanting to make data and form decisions, so there are things that we can say, hey, you know, like, this is a good candidate, but our beginning of the year assessments are not going to be yet, and so we are, we are using it as practice, yes, and I would say mostly for that.
So once this school year is done, we should have had most of a school year with at least some training in that, so maybe we'll see some of the effects.
And as for about 600 kids, that's the maximum, but we may get to 500 kids, that would be K through 4 for this year, so 500 to 600 in that range, I think that's max we've paid for so far, but...
You're focusing on the ones that need it the most.
Yes.
So if we bump those up, it's potentially...
Yeah, a lot of it's the kids we think are going to benefit the most from it, and yeah. So that's one of our strategies, so, yep. But then that will take, so if it's, you're a kindergartner and you're doing that, the first day that you would just saw up here would have been third grade reading, so it will take a few years to start impacting, so it should be one of those things, and when we look down the road three, four years from now, it should help, but like, right now, we're counting on, you know, there's the student, there's the teacher, and there's a curriculum to use, those are like three pieces to the puzzle. And we have amazing teachers doing great work, we got good curriculum, and then if you think about what's the one thing, we got to get our kids ready for the learning experience, and that's what that program does, it helps us build the learner, so they're more able to focus, concentrate, tend, better memory skills, fine motor skills, those things that get in the way, the blocks for them to learn, we're going to take those down in a systematic way, and then hopefully they can get to the learning like everybody else if they're in a class and they struggle. So very positive, but we know that's, again, it's not a one-timer, we're going to fix all of our problems because the data, you know, but we think that'll be part of the story about how we continue to climb. Our kids, you know, are amazing kids, and we've just got to help them learn the material that's expected to learn on that test, to show up as a positive data point, even though we know great things are happening for all kids in our district, we want to make sure that we also help them pass these tests at a higher rate, and it'll happen. Not that we're all test-focused, but we're kid-focused, and we focus on the whole child, so. All right, don't want to take too long on this, want to keep moving, if that's okay. I'll go to three, operational excellence. Our commitment there is, we are committed to innovative operations that enhance the best-in-class performance of our students. Dr. Metcalf, for the most part, takes the lead here, and there are three objectives. Goshen Schools annually prepares updates to the district's Strategic Continuous Improvement Plan with a rhythm and cadence for reporting results, data-driven planning. That's what you're seeing tonight, this conversation, we, hopefully, ABCs, you'll hear a lot of that, that's going to be what you hear, okay? 3.2, superintendent will work with directors, principals to prepare a review of the current board policy and recommend updates to the policy and handbooks to keep it current with best practice and recent changes in the law. So this is the Niola work that we're doing, and I really need to change, associate superintendent will work with, because Alan's the lead, he's rocking it, but Terry, Terry's been in every single meeting, we've talked about every single policy, she's getting pretty good too, and Alan's done the same thing. I've been flighty here and there at times, but those guys have been the stalwarts, taking the lead, and we, by the way, well, I shouldn't steal your thunder, is it?
That's okay.
Alan is going to have some first drafts ready to come out soon, we don't know, we have to get stuff back from Niola before we're able to share the first drafts with you. We're looking at a series of, would bring it to you as a superintendent report, here it is, it's in a folder, you can look at the folders, and then we'll have a discussion, like first readings, and then a second reading to vote on, is our plan, and we'll take as long as the board needs to get this right, so.
We can read each policy word by word out loud.
Not planning on, but...
Did we have any policies that needed to be updated based on July new laws?
So...
Because we haven't voted on any, right?
We, those are going to be, but that's actually what we're finalizing right now with Niola, as we did, went through and did the packet, since we started the packet, the new policies have come out. I think we're, we're done with those now, or the first?
I have a couple I need to just tweak a little bit, and then I can...
And then we'll have a second packet, actually, that came out this fall.
We're still waiting on the state criteria background.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that works, come along very well. So that's all 3.2. 3.3 is just, we're trying to, as we, we're doing these clarity things, clarity charts where we're kind of saying, here's what a POC meeting is supposed to look like, here's the things you can, here's what a MTSS meeting should look like. We're trying to get clarity from our office, we're with the principals, so we're all one unified district, kind of following the same set of expectations there, so that's what that third one is. So those are our three major objectives that we're working on. And we don't have a huge report here, other than to say, 3.1, this is what I gave you tonight, and that's what I'm going through right now, so. All right, so let's go to 4.0, people commitments. Our people commitments, "We are committed to hiring and retaining innovative, engaged, highly effective leaders, educators, and staff who serve our students and families with industry-best practice and passion for their work." And I'll, pardon me, but I'll read these. "We will improve our level of engaged students district-wide each year to increase hope, engagement, and well-being," and Lori Schreiner's kind of leading that one, "but we're, we don't have data yet, we don't know how to, like, we think we're going to, we think we know what we're going to do, but we're going to have data for you this year, that's what that goal will be, to have some kind of data points that we can point to that indicates engaged students." 4.2, "We will improve our level of engaged employees district-wide by 1 percentage point annually. We'll be in the upper quartile of educational institutions by 2030." That's Tracy Noe's work on that one. We're on track this year, we made growth, made improvement, we're going to keep doing that next year. 4.3, "We will improve our level of engaged parents district-wide each year," and Lori's kind of leading that one, and working on our data measures for that one as well.
We have data coming in soon.
Yeah.
And comparison data.
Hopefully, we can then say, so 1% better means, and that's just how we're going to do it, so kind of hopeful on all that stuff. Having said that, Dr. Metcalf, first day of school report?
First day of school went very well, heard great feedback from parents and staff again about our one start, they feel that was a great opportunity to get students who are new to the building, awaken, make connections, kind of build that culture before everyone's there. Helps a lot of kindergartners, because there's nobody else in the building except kindergarters, but they have their whole place themselves, so there's also a lot of hands-on that helps with that. Principals, some reports that we've heard, principals didn't really feel like this was the first day of school, it felt like people just stepped in and just kept going, so we were so, so we're great, very happy with that. Transportation, we still had a number of parents who did not register to their scoops for transportation, so there were some delays, but there are, have some drivers in and out, we're still having delays. Some things we were doing next year, we're going to be doing differently, I've been talking to Mr. Graves, our transportation, is next year, we are going to just go ahead and route all junior high students, and then ask, and then ask parents to just verify, will they be writing? That way, it's probably easier to decide, it's easier probably to take them off a route than it is to add them to a route, but it will still be parents will have to watch that. Our transportation software company had been blocked about a week before we started, and so they have, they are trying to combine two companies, and they have had some issues with some of their services such as the bus app and our TransAct routing software, so I got an email from them last week apologizing, so hopefully we'll be better prepared next year, but I think transportation has settled down and getting closer and closer. All we have to do is get the right...
Are you a magician?
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Anybody have questions for Alan? Okay, I think, let's, before, oh, Jim, we'll let you back, clean up on this one, and have Javi, oh, you already did the, oh, no, the perfect iRead scores, let's do that, let's recognize those students.
Yeah, so we have second-grade students who this year achieved a perfect score on iRead 3, so we have students from Waterford, who are still showing to accomplish that, so congratulations, Francesco, from town.
I take credit for one of them. Actually, I shouldn't, because I...
I'm unsure on the last name for a coach.
Do you think your mom would visit?
Mom and dad might take umbrage with that.
So congratulations to our second graders. Now, it's a perfect score, it's a big deal, you won't see them on the screen next year because they don't have to take iRead next year because they've already passed. So our third graders who achieved a 6th score, perfect score, I mean, against the model Parkside, so congratulations, that's well done.
Awesome. Okay, now, we'll turn our sights to Tim Picker and the high school, our high school athletic director, and he's going to share some successes on the athletic field.
So last spring, we had three athletes go to the state track meet.
So last spring, we had three athletes go to the state track meet, two males and a female. So Aaron Angamai, who was a senior, finished 24th in the discus. Daniel Kinson, who was a junior, finished 28th in the long jump. And then Christina Padvoca placed third. And as a sophomore, she also placed fifth. She's got pretty good hopes to go farther this year, hopefully. But it's been a great spring for us. It was, and it kind of the track season kind of was towards the end of that. So that's our athletes.
We didn't have a chance. We did baseball last time, but this group was missed board if you, and so we want to make sure we recognize them at the board meetings. So.
And we're off and starting to fall.
Questions for Jim? Football team looked pretty good. Thanks. Last thing I want to say before I wrap up, Mr. President, is as we've gone through the changes in the board policy working on our Neola, one of the things that I'm going to be bringing to the board is these new Indiana code has changed. And we are able to, and I believe should, increase the pay for our board members. Right now, your stipends $2,000 a year. And then we're able to increase it to 10% of what the stipend is, or your stipend would be 10% of what the top teacher beginning teacher pay would be. So it could be up to 10% of that beginning teacher pay. So I'm gonna bring a recommendation to you guys. We can have discussion at that time and then it's the mechanism. I know you guys would never do it on your own, but I really feel like as superintendent, part of my job is to make sure we're doing the right things at the district. And even though you would never ask for that, I'm going to be making that recommendation. So I'll be bringing that to you next time for Bob. It was in the 90s. I swear that that's what the stipend was.
I think what I was told was 1989.
That would make sense.
Is when it was put at $2,000. So it's been.
It's time.
It's been a little while.
It's time. So I'm gonna be bringing that next time. I've got some language from Tim Shelley, our attorney, and asked him to put together some language. So I just got a few more finishing touches and I'll bring it to you as a kind of a discussion next time. And that concludes my reports. Finally, thank you.
All right. No, thank you. It's great updates. We appreciate it. We like, we need to make sure we know what's going on. So we appreciate it very much. All right, we will now transition to board committee reports. So board members obviously sit on various reports. Our student advisor is here this month and I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but oftentimes we will hear an update from yourself about the student body. You're obviously, if you're ready to, you can do that. If not, just we'll call on you in future meetings. So just throwing that out there. Welcome. We appreciate you being here. But other.
She's an entrepreneur, by the way. In our entrepreneurship class. Excited.
But other updates from board members on the committees they sit on.
Use the council meets tomorrow night. I had an update, but it's on my computer, which I forgot today. So.
No problem.
I'll give it next month.
All right. Meeting twice a month, we'll be able to have more options to get these up. So thank you all very much. All right. So with that, then we are gonna go to item five, which are consent agenda items. Start with five point one approval of accounts payable dated August 25, 2025 and payroll dated August 8, 2025. Five point two, 2025, 26, outdoor education. Five point three, NAFSCE, New Orleans Conference. And five point four personnel. Anything to highlight on the consent agenda items tonight? Nope. All right. So with that, consent agenda items are approved as presented. Moving on to item six, action items and six point one approval of district marketing. Dr. Metcalf.
So at the last meeting, we had a discussion about contracting with the U to create a 30 second video of kind of marketing our school district. Questions that it will run four times over four months, for a month at a time, this fall and spring. There were some questions from the board. Our person is also here, so he has been working with us. One of the questions was, could we run this? Could we run, since we own the video, could we run it on our social media at the same time that it's running on the screening services? The answer is yes, is our video. We are able to post it at that, at that point at any time. There were also questions about streaming services, but also have the information, the information we will get from the U about how many hits it has had, how many people watched it totally, how many people. And so I believe you received a package in your board update a week ago or this last Friday.
In my email to you, not this last Friday, but the Friday before.
That had, that had kind of an outline from WNDU about, about that. Andrew, you wanna come to the podium?
He can communicate like nobody's business. Trust me. He's very good.
Not that we missed after the last board meeting. Now, I think you covered the gist of it, but there's been a lot of internal discussion back and forth about the direction we want to take with this commercial and kinda where this could lead us to and different avenues. The GTV class is actually working on another 30 second style video focusing on attendance as well. So that's another class that we could use that also benefits our students.
So Andrew has created scripts, created scripts for these videos. One of the things that he recommended was, we did find out is that we could have two different voiceovers in the same video. So I believe.
Yeah, so the first script we're thinking about using is just gonna be kind of a generic feel-good script, kind of generic for Goshen Community Schools. We're thinking about writing that in the first two months that this will air. And then we also thought that this would be a good opportunity to kind of advertise enrollment. So I have a script for the second two months. I believe that's February and April. I'm a quote for the spring of 2026. So the end of the school year, kind of advertising enrollment for the 26, 27 school year.
We felt like that was a good way to maximize, one, the investment and it can serve dual purposes. Getting our narrative out there, letting people know what great things are going on in the ocean. First during the fall and then advertising in the spring that, hey, we are accepting enrollment in certain grade levels. So.
I think it's fantastic that we.
I'd say let's, let's get a motion. Let's get a motion in a second on the floor. We can open for discussions, more questions. So. So with that quick presentation, can I have a motion in a second to open up the item for discussion and voting? Moved by Mr. Elizalde, seconded by Mr. Glick. Go ahead. Questions, please.
No, I think it's great that we are doing something to let our community know the great, great things we do at Goshen Community Schools, I think. If you're not involved through your children, Goshen Community Schools, sometimes our community is stuck in the past. And their beliefs are, beliefs are from the past. So I'm so happy that we're doing this. A lot of new members in our community do not speak English. And they should also know the great things that Goshen Community Schools does for our community, for our kids, for our community. Right? As Goshen Community Schools, we do great things eventually, you know, beneficial for everyone, the whole community. So my question is, are we also targeting the planning district?
Potentially. There's been some discussion about that, about finding a Hispanic speaking narrator to then replace the English version with those videos. We've also been doing some internal welcome videos to target those Ukrainian, Russian, Hispanic speaking families.
Other questions from the board, comments from the board? So this will start, I mean, we, have we started developing kind of your, I guess, framework, your storyboards right now? Do we have a vision that we're working towards?
The only thing we've really finalized is the script. I've been in contact a little bit with WNDU. But we've kind of been waiting to move forward with production until we get approval from you guys.
I was gonna mention this, but I think it is possible, right, to target our audience based on zip code?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they can do it as broad as we want or as narrow as we want. We could do all, I think it's 120,000 impressions in downtown Goshen if we really wanted to. But I think we were thinking about Goshen, some Casillasco, some Elkhart, I believe. Maybe some La Grange. I forget what the discussion was. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the note that Jim had sent out was saying to focus on Elkhart County as opposed to doing the surrounding counties.
Okay, yeah, that might be right.
And particularly Goshen.
Yeah.
We really want, we're doing this because we want to keep the kids that live here in Goshen, in Goshen. We want them to come to Goshen Community Schools. And so that's our real targeted audiences, the families that are here. And really, we, I think it's wrong. I have an issue when school districts try to steal from each other. I don't think that's good for kids and families. So that's who we, that's who we really want to target and how tightly we can do that. We haven't talked that much about that, but that will be.
Yeah, I believe they can do zip codes. I mean, they can narrow it down pretty, pretty close.
Other thoughts, questions from the board? Okay, we ready to vote? We have a motion and a second on the floor for item six point one. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, passes seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to item six point two, approval of Nimble. Zoe?
Yeah, thank you. In your packet, you have a memo and a quote requesting your approval to move to a new hiring software called Nimble. This was actually introduced by Dr. Evans a couple of months, maybe three, four months ago. He had mentioned it in superintendent's report. Since then, we have really been looking at it and took it into consideration. As you know, the HR office, the goal of that office is always to support the work of our leaders in their quest to hire the best that they can hire and make our onboarding process as quick and efficient as we can, not only for the candidates, but also for the leaders so that they know when people are coming in their buildings, when they got all their paperwork in, when the approvals are done and everything is ready to go for those candidates. The current system we use has been okay, but it has had some, some glitches or just some, some nuances to it that sometimes slow the process down. So we've looked at Nimble and had different presentations. And the last presentation, we brought the principals in to look at it and say, give us their, their thoughts about it. And we would like the board to give us approval tonight to move forward with putting it in place of the current system we use as our recruit and hiring tool for onboarding candidates and hiring candidates. The price range is just about the same, I believe. I'm looking at Dr. Evans for confirmation for that. Cause of training and. Nimble is used by the IDOE. So it is their hiring platform. And so once candidates, if they're applying for different jobs around the state, once they've uploaded a lot of things, they're automatically uploaded. And so then once they click on one button, they can apply for different jobs in a variety of places around the state. So that's a bonus. But when we watched it with the principals, like the principals will be able to see exactly where a candidate is in the hiring process and can even help to nudge a candidate if something's not turned in on time or something needs to be submitted yet that hasn't been submitted. So it looks a little cleaner. We hope that to be the case. We've played around with it. We've, we've done some pros and cons with it. And anytime you switch a hiring system, there's always going to be some bumps along the way. But we think it looks smoother. And that's our goal is just to make that, that process as efficient as we can to get those candidates hired and in the right seats that the leaders want them in quickly. And not to be so tedious for the candidates as well, so that they don't give up in the process of getting hired. So. So we are asking your approval tonight to move forward with that. And in our quest would be that with your approval, we have that in place for the hiring season next spring. So this will set us up to work on it and get everything where we need it to be and be ready for spring recruitment season next in 2026.
Appreciate that very much. All right, may we have a motion and a second for item six point two?
Move for the passage of item six point two.
Moved by Mr. Glick, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Questions on what we just heard on the proposal for Nimble or comments?
Is this the first time we've used them or have we used this program before?
We haven't used Nimble. It's, there's about three companies out there that do a recruit and hiring system. Some of them are tied to your student management system. Power School has a recruit and hire, but we don't currently use Power School as our student management system. We have recruit and hire, which is actually our platform we have now. And then there's Nimble. So those are about the three most prevalently used. So it's, we haven't currently used Nimble.
Just to make sure I understand what we're voting on. Is this a contract or is it just a license for a year?
It's one year contract. So it'll set us up to be ready to go. And then we'll have to renew it yearly, which is what we do currently with our, with our system we have now.
I noticed there was two years listed for the support, a 2,000 and 1,000.
Yeah.
But there was only one.
That'll be that second year of support, but you'll still have to do the, the next year contract.
We're not really voting on the next year.
Just to make sure we hear, so the annual subscription is 5,000. And it's the first year of implementation is an additional 2,000. So I just want to make sure that's clear because I heard a couple of different numbers there. So.
The total would be 7,000.
7,000 this year, correct. Other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for item six point two. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, same, seven zero. Thank you. All right, that concludes our action items tonight, and we will now go to discussion items. And seven point one, 2026 budget presentation. Dr. Evans, bring us on.
All of you have a ledger by here in front of you. I mean, certainly not kind of. I have to go through every page of that. Because I know that you want to do that privacy of your own homes. But every line of the budget is in there and what we're proposing to be spending there, as you know, as a school board is responsible to approve the budget each year. And so these binders contain everything that will set that budget. And the budget was built on history of how we've expended monies in the past, what our priorities are for the future. And so we can put that together and we build budget. The largest portion of the budget is the education fund. And these notes, these numbers that I'm gonna read to you are found, you can see the, in the very back of the binder and the notes is, is actually this page that I'm reading from. So you can follow along with that or read it later if you want to write these down. But within the education fund, we have the rabinal programs. And that encompasses $27.8 million worth of staffing and other things to help out to support the rabinal programs in the education fund. Special program within the education fund, which would be the exceptional needs students, $3.35 million. Mediation programs, which is all debt in summer school, is almost $400,000. Support services, which would be all of the principals and those who've had costs, would be $4,600,000. Community service operations, which would include coaches and extracurricular activities, would be $741,000. And then we would transfer. be $741,000. And then, we would transfer the fund to fund from education operations, 15%, which is $7,478,200. So, those are the funds that we get per student. We get a certain allocation of monies for each student that we have, and so that's controlled by our board. The operating referendum and other funds that are tax-related would be separate from that. The operating referendum, that's $6.7 million. Debt services, paying back our loans and monies that we borrowed, are $13,953,000. Capital referendum, which is some projects we've done in the past, but that are a 20-year payback, we're paying back $6,365,000 of that this year, which was consistently allocated last year. The operations fund, after we have the transfer of the $7.478 million, would be $18,500,000. And the ready day fund, which you get to expand, and I've never in my tenure anywhere, I've never dipped into the ready day fund, but we always have it there as one that I get just in case something crazy happens this year. So, we say this every time, but these numbers are advertised high because they're, we're held to the letter that's generated by our current tax rate system. Because we don't even know what our assessed value is yet, we advertise high to protect it. So, if we get to 1782 notice, we can reduce that, and I'll do that in December. So, that would be just a real quick and short explanation of the budget, but you have it all here to look at. And my hope is that we can bring it back to you next time and ask for permission to advertise the budget. After we advertise it, then we'll have a prehearing and a following board meeting, and then we'd like to give you the opportunity to vote on the question.
Okay, so, board members, you have your binder. Read up, so you can ask Dr. Evans a lot of questions. But in all seriousness, do take some time to, I guess, begin to review this. There's a tremendous amount of detail in here, broken down by, you know, each, each different, it's called WBS element, we've got set up for our district here. So, do we have any initial questions tonight for Dr. Evans or some studying ahead of us?
Is there any way to get an electronic copy?
I have an electronic copy, but maybe you could ask me specifically which section, because they're, I put them all together separately. I don't have the whole, every page electronic.
Just that I try to go through it, and I sometimes be able to search for different types of things versus having to look through every single line. I mean, I'm going to try to read through it, but also it's just obvious.
The, like, the, our software program that we have, like, the operation fund 2026 budget would be what, I assume you've loaded in Comptrol as a budget?
Not yet. I will once the budget is approved. But I could send you all of the spreadsheets of the budgets from the operations education.
They'd just be separate per candidate.
Yeah, that's-
Other questions or initial comments from the board? Would you like to reference a certain line item to ask? Oh, come on, Bob. Have a little fun. Okay. Well, this is something we will be talking about for the next, as you see at the schedule here, through early October. So, a lot of options here to review, ask questions, get clarification. So, this is one of our main duties as a board, so please take the time needed to check this thoroughly and go from there. So, thank you very much, Dr. Evans. All right, and with that, that does just bring us to the end of our meeting here. So, closing items. Mr. DeVois, any administrative items tonight?
I know, just that today was our Title I preschool start day. There's 68 kids, I think we've got enrolled in that. That's exciting. No transportation this year. Parents are having to take them, but, and then no school Monday due to Labor Day. I wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day weekend coming up. So, and then our next board meeting will be Monday, September 8.
And board members, any items to bring up that were not on the agenda tonight? Okay. So, with that, I'll look for a motion for adjournment, please.
No adjournment.
I got, Glick, Goodman, either way, however you want to flip it. They both did it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned tonight.